So hello guys, we are here with the Georgetown Pond Grassroots Advocacy Group. We have, uh, tell us who you are. David, what's going on Dave?
Thank you Nick and D-Dog, David Tocoin, I'm the state senator for Smithfield, North Providence and Lincoln. Thank you for having me.
No problem, what's going on?
Hi Sandra Achilles, Smithfield historian.
Alright, and uh, who's over? What's going on Patrick?
I'm Patrick Taylor, I am one of the guys who went to this memorial.
Yeah so guys, Patrick Taylor, I I've seen him on the news and I've been talking to him for about a month. He's he's uh, the guy, I'd say he doesn't want to take credit, but he's mainly in charge for doing all the nice little uh, spot we got there for the memorial. So, thank you for doing that Patrick and Elaine, nice to see you. You've got some good knowledge on the town too, I know you've been doing your research. And then hello, what's up Reverend Dave?
Hi, how are you? Nice, thank you for having us.
So Dave, you say a little something at the beach every year?
Yes, Patrick and I have known each other for, I don't know forty years? No, forty years, we went to high school together. But yeah, Patrick reached out to me as a reverend to invoke just the power of God over the whole group and the event itself, every year we've been in contact doing this. So, it's been quite a, quite a journey and certainly one that I've met so many great people and I've known David for a long time and we've met some great people, so it's a wonderful group.
Could somebody give us a brief overview, uh, what's going on with this pond? Uh, is there a lot of drownings here or what is the memorial about? So if people might be unaware in town, what is going on with Georgetown Pond?
Just to make awareness to the young kids, if we can save one life, all this time, money, it would be well worth it. And one life, that's all we need to save.
Yes Elaine, do we have, uh, do you know the official number of drownings we have here?
Twenty-two.
It is twenty-two, okay, I thought, for some reason I thought it was twenty-one, but alright. Well yeah, what, you want to say something?
Yeah, I had a few questions about the pond and the memorial, that's cool. Basically, so what year did you say the memorial was first put in place?
Two thousand twenty we started, two thousand twenty-one we got the stone.
Okay, and how much more work is there to be done in the memorial, what else are you planning on doing?
We just got to install the bricks this year and landscaping. We didn't do landscaping last year because we knew we were putting bricks in, so I didn't want to.
Well, once it's completely all set up, what uh, is your goal for it to actually like completely look like? What's the final goal?
Next year's fundraiser will be for the flagpole. Then the year after the flagpole, we want to put a storyboard over near the boat ramp. Because people who go to the boat ramp have no idea if our stone is over there. And so we kind of, we need to let these people know that you never go that way.
What is, if somebody wants, if somebody wants to go to the memorial, we have one coming up in June, right?
Yes.
Can you give us the date and time it is?
Yeah, June fourteenth, we have a post on it.
So June fourteenth and, what is the name of the Facebook page about the memorial?
Georgetown Beach Memorial.
Okay, so Georgetown Beach Memorial, all the info's on there. You seem to update it uh, quite regularly, so, but we can see the little banner you got, it tells you, you know, what it is. So um, what is uh, the history here? So we have a, we have a mill and we have, uh, bring it up on the, bring up his map here.
Here's the map here.
So B-Dog is bringing up the map, I've done it the first time, okay. So here we are Georgetown Pond, so while we have this up, Sandra, please tell us a little bit and tell them like where to circle with his mouse, what are we looking at? And uh, what is the, the history of this area, was it always a pond here? And what's with the mill right there, was the pond powering the mill? What's going on with Georgetown?
In eighteen fifty, the pond was created from the Oneasquiat River and that was to power the Vernon Mill, which is to the right-hand side of this, on the map here.
So Vernon Mill, which modern day building is that? Is that the one with the apartments in, that's called Higgins Apartments or?
It is condos, currently condos.
Okay, okay, so, oh, those are condos, those aren't apartments?
And there's also the uh, pillars when there was an old train track over there as well, right?
Yes, the train, the train did pass through.
Zoom into the, to what she's talking about B-Dog, zoom into uh, whatever.
There's the condos right around here.
So I believe, see that right here, that's, uh, those are the condos, so that was the original mill, right? That's what was being powered from this pond, it wasn't Georgetown Manor, I don't believe, right?
No, that wasn't there yet.
So that's the, the original, and it was added on to, it started in eighteen thirteen.
Eighteen hundreds, right here.
Alright, so those condos were eighteen hundreds, so that was why they flooded, that was why they flooded this area because they wanted to put a mill there, the geography probably just seemed just about right. So they saw the whole swamp and said, let's flood it and we can have the pipe coming in to power the mill, fuel the textile industry, industrial revolution, right? So Smithfield played a role, just because we had the wetlands and rivers over here. So, uh, behind you, we seem to have a poster here, I can actually zoom in with the camera. What are some of these pictures, so people can see what it looked like back in the day? Some of these pictures here, I see we have uh, there's one with the pipe right on his hand, let me zoom into that one.
So in the late eighteen hundreds Georgetown, Smithfield was ordered to lower the water level by nine feet because of the fear of the whole town, you know, part of that Georgetown being flooded out. So they did, this is the construction of lowering it by nine feet.
Okay, so, there was actually, I was reading about that, they lowered it because uh, they were afraid of it flooding because there was historic floods that happened then, from levees and dams letting go. There was, I forget where it was, I think it was somewhere in the mid-Atlantic states, it killed a bunch of people, might have been Pennsylvania. But people got killed from floods back in the day guys, it would flood a whole area, a whole uh, you know, because you think Georgetown Pond, Georgetown Pond is higher than the actual apartments. If that thing let go, I mean, I'm sure they did some modern helping out with the drainage and everything, but the water level of the pond is higher than the apartments, you walk up to the dam.
The apartments are in a flood area, um, oh, uh, hang on a second, I have a picture of the memorial right here if you want.
Oh yeah, let's switch over to you buddy. Okay, so here is, is the memorial. Let me fix my camera, so we're back for you guys, okay, sorry. Alright, so you have the memorial up here.
So that's where the pond is right there, uh, I don't know why they're not showing the picture of it on here, here it is.
This is when you guys became famous on the news. You know, where can we find, no, go to his uh, go to his Facebook page, we'll have the best picture of it, right? So, okay, we have, say it again Patrick, twenty-two drownings?
Twenty-two.
We have twenty-two drownings in this uh, small pond in Smithfield. Why are there so many drownings? Keep in mind, it was over the course from, I believe eighteen seventy-something was the first one to now, but that is like an unprecedented number to have on this very basic, regular pond. I have a couple theories about it, but I want to hear you explain uh, why these drownings are happening, why there's one female and twenty-one males, why the gender thing, you know, men more competitive, they want to get someone out there? What's going, what's going on with the drownings?
We're kind of getting more information about that, we really don't have too much information on that yet about what happened with the people, but, the cold springs, it's not just something out of the water, it's a lot of things going on with that cold springs. You probably know more about it than I do, but.
Yeah Elaine, so tell us a little bit about, I think you did some research, the cold springs, I don't believe that we have uh, like, it's like solid scientific proof there's a cold spring, but it sure as hell seems like there's one. Now, yeah, tell us, what's going on, so uh, these drownings, what happens there? Uh, swimming out to an island and there's a cold spring?
Because the pond is man-made and the whole geography of the ground, the sediment and layers and volume and pressure, if you look up the scientific meaning, that is what causes cold springs to come up. And within three minutes, your body could be stiff and you can drown.
Yes, so, my speculation, uh, get me a picture of the names on their, use his, use his Facebook page there. So my speculation is guys, we have twenty-one males, one female. What I'm thinking is also, I notice, I should have looked at the dates more, but I noticed a good amount were in June, and I'm saying, okay, in June, we get a lot of hot days, but the water is still cold. So, I feel like, boys will arrive at the pond, one will point to the island and say, what are you going to do, go to the beach with the grandmas over there? You say, let's swim to the island and it'll be our own little fort, our own little kingdom. So they swim out there and every time, when you're on solid land, two hundred feet's nothing. Two hundred feet in the water is completely different. So you're, you're hot, your body's warm, it's like expanded, you know what I mean, like it doesn't like trickle up yet. So you get in the water, first of all, it's cold, so Patrick, tell them.
Oh, here's the whole names. Thank you.
Yeah, blow it up buddy, blow it up, so we got all the names here. And there's a very interesting thing I want to say about names. So the speculation is that it's mostly uh, younger teenage boys because they're, they're competitive, want to swim to the pond with their friends, get out of breath, cold shock, it seizes them up, it like literally seize up and you can drown. So, we want to look here, so the very first one, does anybody have information on Frederick Kendricks, age eighteen in eighteen seventy-three? Uh, does anybody know anything, I mean, this was probably not very well documented, does anybody know about this?
He's the first one that recorded drowning Georgetown, it was two horses or four horses?
Was he the one that fell through the ice?
Yeah, with the horse, that's the ice house.
So you're telling me?
Oh, so is it truck or was it a horse and buggy?
Two horses or four horses, we're not sure.
Like horse and buggy, like?
No, no, horse pulling the ice, that was the ice house.
Oh, okay.
And they worked for the ice house.
What is the ice house?
Right after the pond we made. But the ice house used to feed all summer long, hay in there.
So they're, yeah, so.
That's how the ice house burnt. The ice didn't burn, it was just all that insulation, it didn't have refrigeration.
They would store ice in there.
A hundred years ago, in July, you could probably get ice if there was still enough left by, because they didn't have refrigeration. They would pack all the snow there, pack it really tight, throw so much hay on it and so that way, it would stay insulated and they could get ice to make things cold. I don't know if they were making margaritas back then, but for ice, they had ice, oh, probably for store, I'm an idiot. Probably for storing meat, that's what they probably wanted the ice for.
Folks had ice boxes back then.
Yeah, ice boxes were the thing, right?
Well, there was no refrigeration back then, so folks had an ice box, they'd take the block of ice, put it in the ice box and that's how they kept their food, you know, cold, it wouldn't spoil.
Yeah, my dad still called, still called the fridge an ice box, you know, so it wasn't that long ago. So yeah, let's get back to these names, because I want to tell you guys my speculation on what happened here. So I'm a bit of an investigator myself, but, so I'm going to take you on a little journey. Um, since we, the first time I even saw this memorial, was when we went to go do our little ghost hunt over there. And I, I seen all the names and I said, here's a pattern here. We have all English last names until we get to the seventies. In the seventies, we had the European migrations, where we had all Italians and Eastern Europeans, like Polish, and we have some Polish names here, Polish and Italians living in the city. And it seems like the common core thing here is, because the beach I believe is free to go to when you're from out of town and it's like, what, ten minutes from Providence? So, because who, so from the seventies, it seems to be whoever's living in the city, can, you can't have a pool in the city, usually city kids don't know how to swim well and they don't live near a pond, they haven't been to the pond all the time, grow up going to the pond, a weaker swimmer from the city seems to go there, so let me take you through it. Right here, we have, so Corinne Lawt actually, we were able to look at her death certificate, she was from Scotland, so she was an immigrant, she was born in Scotland. And uh, the only female, by the way, that was the only female to drown, she was only aged twelve, but look, William Camino, uh, sorry, I apologize for butchering names, John, she, uh, hey, do you guys read the names at the thing? Does anybody know how to pronounce them correctly?
You can guess.
Well, I, I gotta get a, but look at this, we have uh, Chino, Chanciago, Taylor's English name. Then we have, look, Ratchewicz, a Polish name, it seems to be like a French last name, and then another Polish name, Valeriana, an English name, Orsi, Italian, but then it goes back to, you know, regular English names and now we have uh, like Latin names, the last couple ones, so. Like that's, so my speculation is not, nothing's a hundred percent, when you speculate, you're just trying, what are you thinking David?
Yeah, can you put that back up? I was just actually looking at the clusters of dates, really surprised me. Uh, you look at the distance between the, the dates at the very beginning, but then you get uh, into the seventies, you've got one, two, three, four, you have six or seven right in the seventies, maybe eight in the seventies.
Well, there was a swing there and there was a cabin on the island.
So this is, this is where I'm going with, with what you were referring to in the theory, is we swim out, the young guy swims out, they want to show off, whatever the reason. But they spend hours out there, on the swing, in the hot sun, no water. They're, they're all out there and they're just having fun, a bunch of guys, right now, they jump back in the water. They've had all day there, six hours in the hot sun, now they begin to swim back. They're weaker than they were, they're hot, they're dehydrated, and then they hit these springs. That's kind of, and it's kind of, now that I'm thinking through it, looking at those dates, we see that kind of idea happening, I'm just throwing, it's a theory.
Well, I have, I have a couple of theories myself on it. I swam out when I was thirteen years old and I was in the best shape of my life and it was a tough swim. You hit the middle and you feel a current pulling you a certain way. So, you know, if you look at the boys and men that were in their teens to early twenties, that's when the frontal lobe isn't developed and they're, they're affected by, you know, peer pressure. Let's go swim out, let's go take a swim out, and some of them don't even swim. You know, my nephew's friend died, was one of the last people to die there and uh, he was from Providence, didn't swim much, and yeah, he's got his friends, come on, let's go, and he gets out into the middle and he's, he's gone because of peer pressure and, you know, at that age, they don't make good choices. We all know that teenage boys, that's when they, that's when they die the most because of their choices. So I think it factors, that's a factor, definitely.
I'd have to agree with you, uh, for me personally, I had, and perhaps this is why Patrick had called me the mercy of God saved me, from that particular, exact same situation you just mentioned. Let's go out, yeah, I can do it, I can do it, I can do it, you know, I'm a tough guy. Young, you know, stupid, you know, I can, I can say that, because I'm pointing to me. And I remember coming back after a long day on the island and I remember just sinking. And I was close, I wasn't far from making it. And I just remember, uh, just feeling, just sinking lower and lower and lower, and then I looked up and something just, I just fought, fought as hard as I could to get back and made it to shore. But I actually felt that cold spring in that same situation. So I think there's a, there's a correlation between this young, aggressive maybe male, okay? Uh, and the extended heat time being out there and the hot day. And if you look close, perhaps, if we did a little bit more research, we have a lot to do. I'm thinking June, school just got out.
Never even thought of that.
School just got out, one of the men, one of the gentlemen that died, Valeriani, I don't know if he was on that list, it was in my tenth grade class. And I remember going into class and he was sat in front of me at math class. And Mr. Torbrosa was my math teacher and I remember not seeing David. And somebody said, what happened, and Mr. Torbrosa had told us that he had just drowned in the pond. So that, he was literally in my seat in front of me.
And that was my husband's first.
He shot behind me in high school.
No, he sat behind your high school, okay.
Well, out of all the ones lost, eighteen of them we think drowned at the island. Most of them are right there between the boat ramp and the island, eighteen of them now we know.
Wow.
The other four, one was down, the other one did a pound, one was over at the dam and the other one I don't know, I think was out in the middle somewhere.
So for the most part, it was those that swam to the island, right at the island, okay.
That's where the problem is. And that's the whole purpose of making awareness to people that you don't want to swim out there.
Yeah, you don't want, I want, I want to get some facts guys, can, what's a big dog?
Well, what I can see here, we're doing the measurements, it looks like it's over a hundred feet from the land to the island and then you got to swim back, so they're doing over two hundred feet of swimming.
It doesn't look that far though, you know?
What, what is that fountain that's there, is that the area of water, what is that, what's that for, does anybody know?
That's your, you know about them.
It helps to, it helps to keep the blue algae at bay. There's another one that's going to be installed to help with that, because after a certain point in the summertime, the pond gets shut down because of the algae.
Yes, it seems every year, they keep putting a little thing, little banner out there saying, hey, don't swim in here or if you do, it's at your own risk because we have this algae issue, if you go in there, get some in your mouth, you could develop uh, some issue. So, uh, yeah, so zoom in a little bit here, I want to see what this point of view looks like when you arrive here and you can see the island. Um, cold springs guys, do we, um, so are there any ideas, can we check the temperature of the water? Yeah, let me go to your computer there.
Do you want to read this, so I can have her read it for us?
Alright, so.
Cold springs are natural groundwater discharges that maintain relatively constant cool temperatures year round.
Let me, let me give like a, an amateur definition of what I think of cold springs, you guys correct me, okay? So I believe, we have so much ledge here on Rhode Island, so ledge is underground rock, right? So, uh, all this rainwater, when it goes to the ground, it doesn't, doesn't just disappear, there's like underground rivers that move slowly. And so when you have a low spot, like the bottom of Georgetown Pond and the rain will take weeks to drain over there and it could come out from the bottom of the pond. So, you're swimming across halfway, bless you, you're swimming across, you should have blessed her there.
Oh yeah, jumped the gun on me.
So, um, the idea is the, the, obviously underground is so cold, because on a construction site, if you see guys coming up from the, like two hundred feet down, like they did in Onyville, those guys have on winter coats in July, underground is cold, it's very cold, probably around thirty, thirty something degrees there, right? So the water coming up, and you're actually, you're in this very strenuous exercise, is going to freeze you and give you cold shock and your body can seize up and drown in silent. You just go under, people just are looking around for you, you know what I mean, it's a very silent thing. All the stuff, you ever jump in a cold tub or a little river or something and it's like tough to talk? And you're like, you know, like this shivery type talk, it's not a good thing. And um, so the, the pond, uh, the only idea I got to say, so I just explained why cold springs could be doing this. I do have to say, I don't know if we have solid scientific proof it's there. We could get temperatures or get thermal imaging and prove it, but the only thing is, there's no like higher ground around Georgetown that I can think of, Georgetown seems to be kind of low. And even that the mills are lower over there, I'd say, the cold spring's going to need some pressure to be pushing that water up, you know? So I'm saying, you know, uh, we don't know for sure, but it sure seems like that's what it, what it is. Even when you uh, go swim there, it's cold, what's going, what's going on David?
Nick, I, I certainly appreciate your investigative passion and your theories, as many theories here, but it's certainly well documented that cold springs and cold water have an adverse effect on your muscles, increasing the effect of drowning, that's, that's not disputable. Obviously, the cold water affects your muscles and, you know, the, the cause of the cold springs and what have you, we, we really don't know, we don't know. But, um, you know, if I may for a minute, I, I'd just like to bring the conversation back a little bit to our friend PJ and this grassroots effort. It's uh, we, we can talk about, you know, the theories and why it's happening, but certainly it has occurred. PJ has started this outreach effort back in twenty twenty to bring awareness. I just happened to drive by Georgetown Pond before I came to this podcast and yes, we have the memorial, so, but he's even erected signage even down to the boat ramp to make, so I don't think the awareness of the dangers of that have been, have been any more uh, advertised than it has in the last five years. And that's the credit to him, PJ's a very, very humble person, uh, he doesn't like to take credit, but he, he, he really doesn't. But if it wasn't for this gentleman and his wife, this would not have occurred. And thank you for bringing it to the forefront to put it on the podcast. Um, he did, you know, the timeframe, I know you were trying to get a timeframe, it was back in twenty twenty, right? When, when you came to the town council? And I just want to go back to donate about this town of Smithfield, I'm a lifelong resident of Smithfield, I've been here for fifty-seven years. This town was built on volunteerism, there's no question about it. PJ's reached out, we, we got Mr. Wozart involved with the stone, we've got local restaurants that have contributed, right? So it's definitely a community effort, but it would not have happened without his intervention.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work and he doesn't like to take credit for it and I just, um, I, I just want to make sure that we got that included in the podcast today because it's, it's because of him.
I appreciate it Dave.
Yeah, I think that we all, all Patrick go big thank you, what's up?
No, I just, I, I was curious, what, what, if Elaine or you can explain, what actually drove this uh, to your, to the surface?
Well, I was good friends with Dave and it didn't really bother me for years. But then, when I got about, I don't know, fifty-something, it was there, it just started bothering me. And I was like, we gotta do something, something, and it just went from there. And then uh, we put the plaque up, I almost stopped because I didn't know where to go next. So, I was sitting there, we were having a coffee and a woman pulls up with her son and daughter, they were probably early teens. She brought them over to the stone and they shared the memorial. Then she took them over to the beach and she pointed out to the island. And you know what, that gave me all the energy I needed. The next day, Sandra contacted me, I want to help get the names. And then from there, here we are now, you know, and everybody in town has been great helping. It's hard delivering the stone and all that.
So certainly, anybody who knows me, I'm a, look at the glass half-full always. And, you know, there's a lot of tragedy that has surrounded this, uh, this issue and, and the pond. But let's look at the good that has come out of it. It motivated Patrick to, for this awareness campaign and by the grace of God, we're going to save certainly a life because of this awareness. Uh, the, the postings, the warnings, the stone, the memorial, it all has a positive effect.
And now maybe swim lessons.
Yeah, they just started that last year, swimming lessons again, that they haven't had in years, that's going to help.
What is that, the YMC or what do you mean, who's doing swim lessons? Oh, at the actual pond, like in nature, you could do swim lessons there? Okay, but like, more people that can swim, it makes it a lot safer. Um, I wanted to, so thank you guys for letting me talk about that, there's one thing I want, I'm, I'm always speculating, because that's all the power I have is speculation, I want to speculate, because, you know, I'm in the construction industry. Go back to the map, please buddy, I just wanted to show you, is there, uh, to prevent future drownings, number one is awareness, okay?
The biggest thing.
The biggest, easiest thing to do, best thing to do, but physically, I always thought about, if you had enough dump trucks, could you fill this in so the water is only about two feet deep from the mainland to the pond, but because we have no horsepower limit on that pond, the big, like big boats come in with the outboard engines, they could get stuck on that sandbar, you know what I mean? So basically, if somebody's going through there, you, you fill it in, uh, they're swimming through and they're kind of having an issue, that their feet could touch the bottom, okay? Keep in mind, this may make it an issue where now they're more confident, now everybody wants to go out there, it's like, you give some, you lose some, it's like, there's no right way to do this.
Or build a bridge.
Or, yeah, is there like, well, come on, but is it, you want to build a bridge, yeah. I mean, okay, I say it's crazy, but who knows?
I think it's faster than filling the pond in, you know?
When I say fill, I mean like, just like, so it's like only, it's shallow, you know, it's very shallow going there, but then you're encouraging kids to go there in the first place. And then when they get off of it, it's a drop off and then, you know what I mean? Or they say, hey, you can't swim, that's fine, you can go there now, because you can walk it and now it's an issue, you know what I mean? So that's probably not a good idea, but like, a barrier, but then you make the pond look terrible, like. Honestly, if the islands were gone, it'd help a lot, you know? I think the islands were just naturally there, I don't think, right, that wasn't like a construction project, because the, the trees on there are kind of big, meaning that they've been there for a while, you know? So, uh, if anybody, we, we got, Kevin Butera gave us a couple comments talking about the rope swing, cool, alright. Um, if, you know, if anybody has any speculation, how do we, how do we save this? I think what Patrick's doing is probably the best thing is awareness, you know, maybe even that area, I don't know if there's a sign there, like telling you anything there, but um, yeah, just a problem that I really can't solve, I thought about it for a couple weeks, like how do we solve this problem? How do we make it so we never have to add a name to that plaque? And um, quick question, is, is there, how do you add a name to the plaque? Do you have an?
I have an extra row, when I put the bricks in, maybe seven rows deep and seven rows across. The last row will be for any future names, hopefully I never have to put a future name in.
That's a great point Nick, what, what is the last date of the drowning?
I believe seven, uh, twenty seventeen, was it Arajo? That was, no, that was.
Two thousand seventeen, Christian Arajo.
Arajo.
So, so I would, uh, you know, offer to you or proffer that the fact that the advocacy has began around twenty twenty and we've gone eight years now without a drowning, I mean, you could say there's a nexus between the awareness campaign and, um, and the prevention of a, a future drowning.
Two years ago, right after the memorial, two kids went out to the island on a log. They were out there for a while, the log floats away, the fire department had to come and rescue, because they couldn't swim back. I just remember that.
They had no business going, so you.
Last, last summer, my friend saved two people that were out in the middle there. He was, he goes and has a coffee and he sees two people struggling, he ran in with his clothes and saved two people last year.
So you're saying that he actually was there and seen people struggle? Wow, uh, that's like a huge deal, I mean, I always go to the beach thinking like, what if I seen somebody drowning, would I go in there? Yeah, that's, that's crazy, that it's, how many close calls have happened, we don't know about. We only, we only know about these names that end up on the plaque, you know, these close calls, um, yeah, this just seems to be like a, quite a deadly pond we're doing with it.
My son saved someone, the beach was full and he saw a person he knew out in the middle from the beach to the island and he was going down, so my son grabbed a tube and went out and got him.
Look at that.
Everybody was there, lifeguards, everybody, the beach was full.
Uh, last thing I wanted to say, so um, uh, so soon we'll do a thing I like to do in this podcast called Closing Arguments, where we all did this for like, say we've been here fifty minutes or whatever, then I'll go, I'll go on a long rant about like what I think about everything, okay? And then we, everybody gets to do their chance and then we do a final summary, right? Um, is it disrespectful for me to do this? It would be, you know, a bit of advocacy for awareness, but would it be disrespectful if I got a licensed lifeguard in a safety kayak with like a flotation vest on and I conducted an experiment where like, I swim to the island? Like getting in a hot car, like make all, do all the variables that could happen. I do happen to be a strong swimmer, but I don't know, I would feel weird having, trying to get somebody that's like a weaker swimmer to do this, but can I swim out to the island under professional monitoring? Go on the island, hang out for a second and then swim back and see if, do I hit a cold spot? Do I freeze up? Do I freeze up, I'm gonna have two people watching me that are like legal lifeguards, you know, I mean. So that way we can figure out what is going on, is it as dangerous as they say it is, and record it and document it the right way, you know, I mean. Is that, do you think that's something that I could look into, or what do you guys think about that?
You gotta remember, I had alcohol.
Oh, they were drinking too.
Well, I could, I could incorporate that variable into this experiment.
Yeah.
I think that you, you could do that experiment with several different people, because I know there was, I think the swim team might swim out there, so there are people that swim from Georgieville Pond to Smith Appleby House and back. So, um, I'm not sure if they're still doing that, but I know that they have done that over the years, so I think if you, I would be willing to enter that. Experiment myself, you know, I'm a great swimmer and I do spend a lot of time on the pond. So I would, I would say maybe we could get five people.
We can watch it and document it.
Do the data memorial.
We could take times and, you know, effects of any cold springs or anything.
Try to map them out, try to see where they are.
Yeah.
You know, you know, Nick, I, I'm sure your motivation is very sincere, uh, but you know, it, is the risk worth the reward? And you know, there's a lot of technology available, maybe like you said, is there some type of imaging or thermal? Uh, technology we could use to see the temperature change, I just hate to see anybody get, you know, injured, but. You know, I'm, I'm sure like you said, you're gonna do it under proper supervision and with, with folks, uh, to keep, you know. We certainly don't want to lose you, Nick, either, uh, and I understand your motivation, I'm sure it's very sincere and from your heart, but maybe. We could, there's technology available that we could, uh, deploy before we put someone at risk.
Yeah, so technology would come fir-, I think, yeah, I think you're right, technology come first, if it seems to be inconclusive, maybe we could think about it.
Can we fly drones over the pond, is that allowed, to fly a drone, we can get imaging, take pictures?
Absolutely.
I don't think it would be not allowed, I think it's a matter of.
Some areas don't allow drones, in Florida, you can't fly drones.
Patrick, you know I flew my drone over that pond and got some cool footage of it, yeah, so I, I did a little video, uh, for Patrick there, but okay, so let me, so I wanted to, um. You know, we've all been talking for a bit, let me, uh, start doing closing statements, then if there's anything that we forgot to mention, everybody think about, because we've been doing this for about, what do you think, Dave?
I'm just wondering if, uh, we have one of the greatest universities for oceanography, right in, right in the state, U R I. I mean, who would not, who would, maybe they can have a little, what do they drop them in the water, submersible, if you would say, a little. Uh, computer, and maybe they could map it, so if anybody's listening from U R I, and you want to do a, a thesis. Come on by and talk to Patrick or, or David Decoin, Senator David, and, uh, perhaps we can make some of this technology come to use, that's in Smithfield. And we can use it, that's in Rhode Island, we could use it.
Great idea.
So that's good, yeah, so, yeah, I like that, I like that a lot, actually, Dave, thank you.
I know they do have drone technology, but it's like over ten thousand dollars for that technology.
I guaran- I guarantee you, I'm like MacGyver, we're not paying ten grand for it, we're not paying ten grand, that's gonna be at the end, we're gonna show that, so, okay, so. In, also, so, so just so everybody knows, watching this, yeah, we're still, everything's still good, everything's good. Uh, so I just met all five of you guys today for the first time, the only person I was talking to was Patrick, and we were excited to do this. Uh, I didn't know I could get five people in here, I had to switch to smaller chairs, so, um. So this, this is cool, uh, I will guess that me and B Dog will be going to this memorial for the first time, uh, in June.
David W. Beter showed me this as well.
Yes, uh, we're talking about, kind of, kind of the middle of my speech right here, buddy, you know what I mean? Me and B, listen, me and B Dog have done a lot of podcasting, I was having, we, we have a lot of fun, right, this is, I'm not, I'm not picking on B Dog over here. So, uh, so to conclude, I think you guys are really knowledgeable, uh, eventually. Um, I want to talk to Sandra about history, like, I feel like Sandra, like, for right now, I'm trying to give her a little chance to talk, but. I feel like there's a lot of Sandra to pull out about the topic, she's, she's pretty good. Um, you know, even came with a poster, like, I love when people do their extra credit, come with a poster, you know what I mean, because. Guys gotta realize, before these podcasts, I'm over here taking notes and stuff, like, seriously researching, taking notes, and that's why I get the clipboard here. But, um, so this is, this is awesome, what's up, uh, what do you think, Dave?
Nick, I, I just wanted to point out, because you did mention about, uh, you know, the history of Sandra, and I think that's a great idea for you to follow up with her, but. You know, when they say a picture's worth a thousand words, Sandra, um, these pictures are act- accurate, accurate, accurate. Uh, I mentioned, and I'm pointing to this, uh, s- steel riveted, uh, pipeline here.
Yeah, we're zooming in right now.
Okay, I, and I mentioned to you, um, back in the late eighties, uh, I was a construction superintendent, uh, for Lynch Construction. And the beach, the beach was, uh, being rebuilt. Uh, with, with the wall and bathroom facilities and so forth, and when we put the sewer line in for the, uh, bathroom facilities. We came across that steel riveted pipe, we had to cross it, so we actually cut that pipe and it's bricked up on, on, on both ends, so. You know, her research is spot on, I saw that pipe buried, you know, for, the water line you wouldn't see, because the water line is not that deep, but a sewer line. You know, it's eight feet deep, at least, you know, uh, for the flow, so I'm, I'm glad to see that you're gonna follow up with Sandra, because her history is spot on.
We're de- we're definitely gonna follow up, and I believe, because, you know, me and David, that, that know about construction, how things work. I believe that may have been delivering water to the mill to power the machines, you think about why they made it so big. The, the, the head didn't have a lot of, uh, a lot of materials back in the day to make this, and for in the eighteen hundreds for them to, I don't even know how they got it there. To get it there and to put that in, took a lot of work, it must have been to power the mill with the power of water and gravity to do that, so that's why they. Put so much effort in, into that pipe, so that's cool, so I'll do my, uh, little, uh, what was I calling it, a final thesis or whatever?
Final thoughts.
So I, I actually have a bachelor's degree, a lot of people don't know that, I have a bachelor's degree in audio and video production, so that would explain all the cameras and stuff here, but, anyway. Um, so this pond was an amazing rabbit hole for me to look through this winter, started looking through it since we did our little ghost hunt there, which. We, it was literally the first time I went up to it, it was like, alright, we're gonna do, we want to start doing the ghost hunting thing, we can get the E V P sensor, is it E M P or E V, the thing that senses the microwave waves. Yes, you can tell, electronic show, but it's a fun thing to do, and we were like, alright, we're right near, uh, the memorial, we're at the apartments, the condos over there. So we did that, and then that's how I met Patrick, uh, and that's how we started getting into this, and it was a whole thing. Uh, I mean, I was looking through a death certificate the other day of it, there's so much history to this, that I guarantee you guys would not know unless. You meet somebody that, that's doing the memorial, or you know somebody that drowned there, there's so much to look into. So, uh, yeah, that was, uh, it was quite an adventure, so thanks for guys leading me down that way, uh, any final statements there, um? Uh, do you want to say something, Patrick, what's up?
Yeah, also I want to announce that White Shadow will be playing for us this year at the beach.
Okay, so the band's gonna be over there.
The other band will get the okay for that, and also, I'll be donating a mystery piece to the game prize. Every child and adult gets a free apple chicken, and then I donate cat house to it, I've been doing that for many years.
That is awesome.
It gets more people.
Yeah, you got any thoughts on this, Reverend Dave?
I just want to thank the, the residents of Smithfield who have come together, David. Uh, for, for really, uh, helping move this project along, I know the town has been, uh, certainly involved in it, and. Patrick has been, has been with the town, working through this, so I, I just want to thank the residents and, and leaders of the town. Uh, David, for, for initiating and helping this advocacy and, and teaching people the, the dangers of trying to swim in this pond. And, and having this memorial has just been, uh, just the next step to teaching the truth about, uh, and being aware. Uh, how dangerous it can be to swim to that island, the pond is not dangerous, it's swimming to the island that's dangerous.
That, that's a very nice quote, we'll put that on a plaque, yes, you're right, so with a lot of things, it's a combination of them, it's not just one or the other, right, it's a combination. Uh, let me think, who's on the chopping list next, Elaine, give us a little, uh, info, I mean, so, I mean, you and Patrick, this is like a pa- project you guys kind of do, uh. What's it, what's it been like, do you ever like get tired of hearing about the pond, I mean, like, it's like, it became like a part of your life here, like, when?
No, I don't get tired of it, I, um. I get overwhelmed sometimes because I have a very busy life, you know, and. I did do some research on the, um, scientific effects of a man-made pond. And the cold springs. And it's very interesting, and I grew up learning to swim at a pond, and I want to see more of that. You know, so kids know how to float, how to swim underwater, I think it's very important.
And we are recording this in March, which means we have a summer season coming up, which can be a great time or a bit of a worrisome time, if you guys have seen the history of this place. So, um, there's that, and, uh, let's just do the, we got a couple of people that might want to do, uh, their last little mission statement before we talk about, um, and ending this and talking about when the date is for that, anybody else?
Uh, thanks for having us today, Nick, I guess.
Move it that way so we can see a little better.
That's a better.
Alright, yeah, what's up, Sandra?
Thanks for having us, I guess the most important message that we could say is, um. If you could reach these ten thousand people like you do with your podcasts, that parents talk to their teenagers, because, you know, that's the age, teenagers are the ones that die in the pond. So if I could give one message to the people of Smithfield and all of Rhode Island, because, you know, lots of people from Providence and other places come to the pond, is. Educate your kids on the danger of the pond, and tell them, do not swim to that island, because of the things that, you may be a great swimmer, but there are things that will affect you while you're swimming. That you can't, you're not strong enough to overcome, so just educate the kids or anybody that you know that's going to the pond, do not swim to the island. That's the best that we can do to try to prevent any more names to be added to the list of the, the memorial.
I think as we always said, abstinence is the best, right, so abstinence from going to that island, you know, that's the number one way to avoid it, yeah. Um, I, I, we kind of went all disarray order, anybody else want to say any final things before I talk about, um, advertising, when our, uh. That is for our podcast, you're gonna get the, like what he pulled up, he pulled up the podcast, you're gonna get the memorial event, buddy, that's alright, that's alright, buddy, which is just. So we can put on the screen at the end, but, um, so you're just pulling up, anybody else that want me to say a final word? Oh, what's, what's going on, Dave?
Certainly, uh, Nick, uh, you know, ma- many of the dangers and of, of that, uh, have been reinforced with our, uh, kind of roundup at the end. I just want to, if I could, go back to how this town was built on volunteerism and grassroots efforts and the technique community. And I want to applaud you and the, uh, Smithfield Town Meeting that you put on, because you've become a part of the fabric of this town, and it gives, you know, our group a forum. Um, to really showcase the, uh, the dangers and the awareness there, so, you know, thanks to you and B Dog for, for hosting this forum. Um, I, I know the, uh, our group really, really appreciates it, so thank you.
Oh, yeah, much appreciated, um, and thank you for calling him B Dog, because a lot of people call him by his real name, but, uh, when he's in this cabin, he is B Dog, because he's the tech guy, he needs that, he needs to have the name. Um, so, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna end it with this, while he's looking that up, I just wanted to say, a lot of things going on with town, with the town right now, guys, as you know, if you would like to come on this, uh, podcast, talk about parente's closing. If you'd like to talk about the, uh, condos they're building on Lime Rock, or the ones they're building in Greenville, you guys definitely allowed to talk about that, we'll try to do one next month, anybody has those concerns. And, um, we are gonna just put this up on the screen, guys, here, is this the right year, twenty twenty-five, yep? So, guys, if you want to go to this memorial, uh, and we'll, uh, have, the, the band will be there, uh, Reverend Dave will be here. Me and B Dog, you want to meet me and B Dog in real life, and see Patrick Taylor and see all the magic here at the pond. Saturday, June fourteenth of this year, twenty twenty-five, from one to three P M. Uh, well, uh, I think we also read the names, right, does, we read the names on, on this, uh, so we'll be able to read all the names on the memorial here, so. Save the date, everybody, it'll be right on Georgieville Pond right here in town. So everybody wave bye, we'll go this way, wave bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much, uh, we'll see you guys again soon, alright, see you guys.